Far right next to the game. Yeah. She gave me a thumbs up.
She gave you a thumbs up. That car's slow.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting. It is Tuesday, October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one, six P M. We will start with the pledge of allegiance, if you would stand for that, and also remain standing for the invocation. Pastor Jay Dunston is here. He's the youth pastor at Bellevue Christian Center.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you guys have just joined me for prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this day, God. We thank you for this evening that we have the opportunity to come together. God, we just pray for your favor over this meeting, this time together, God, that as we discuss things and as different situations get brought up, God, I just pray that you would give wisdom and guidance to each and every single one of us. We thank you for this great city of Bellevue. God, we just pray for your favor over the city and over the things that we do. God, we just pray that you would be with us. God, we pray that you would bless the conversations that take place tonight. And God, that you would just be in and through, working your, working in your will across everything that's discussed tonight. We love you. We thank you so much. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Jay. Okay, I will call the meeting to order. Susan, would you take a roll call, please?
Councilman Stinson.
Here.
Councilman Cook.
Here.
Councilman McCaw.
Here.
Councilman Preister.
Here.
Councilman Burns.
Here.
And Councilwoman Welch.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting will be run in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. Number five item or approval of agenda consent agenda claims and advisory committee reports, five A approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion? Councilman Stinson?
Make a motion. We approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Stinson, seconded by Welch. Any comments? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carried.
Thank you. Item five B approval of the consent agenda. Items marked with an asterisk are approved where this item is unless otherwise removed. Do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Preister. Any comments? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item seven, we have no special presentations this evening. Item eight, we have no organizational matters. Item nine, we have no approved citizen communications. Nobody applied. Item ten, there are no liquor licenses on the agenda. Item eleven, ordinances for adoption, third reading. Eleven A ordinance number four zero five eight and ordinance amending Article One, Chapter Twenty of the Bellevue Municipal Code by adding new sections twenty dash fifteen through twenty dash twenty regarding additional offenses. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number forty fifty-eight and ordinance to amend Article One, Chapter Twenty of the Bellevue Municipal Code by adding new sections twenty dash fifteen through twenty dash twenty regarding additional offenses and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number four zero, four zero five eight as read.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item eleven B ordinance number four zero five nine and ordinance to repeal Article Six, Chapter Nineteenth of the Bellevue Municipal Code regarding noise control. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number forty fifty-nine and ordinance to repeal Article Four, Chapter Nineteen of the Bellevue Municipal Code regarding noise control and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number four zero five nine.
Second.
Motion by Welch, seconded by McCaw. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Eleven C ordinance number four zero six zero and ordinance to amend the Bellevue Municipal Code regarding application for plumbing licenses and examination requirements. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero six zero and ordinance to amend Article Two, Chapter Twenty-seven of the Bellevue Municipal Code by amending section twenty-seven dash twenty-seven, section twenty-seven dash twenty-eight and section twenty-seven dash thirty-four regarding application for plumbing licenses and examination requirements and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number four zero six zero.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Stinson. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item twelve ordinances for public hearing, second reading. Twelve A ordinance number four zero six one, request to rezone lots one and two, Coons Edition, replat one, being a replat of lot one, Coons Edition, from R A to R E for the purpose of single-family residential development. Applicant is Alice Coons. General location, one zero five zero seven Cedar Island Road. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero six one and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska as provided for by Article Three of ordinance number thirty-six nineteen by changing the zone classification of land located at or about one zero five zero seven Cedar Island Road, more particularly described in section one of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. I will open up ordinance number four zero six one for public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience wanting to speak regarding that ordinance, please come forward. And I'll remind you, you have five minutes for each person. Anyone wishing to speak regarding ordinance number four zero six one, please come forward. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing. The third reading and vote will be November.
I was just gonna say I'm Trevor Baskin with Thompson Rees and Order. I'm representing our client if anybody has any questions.
Okay, thank you. Third reading will be, uh, third reading and vote will be November second, two thousand twenty-one at six P M here in the council chambers. Item twelve A one, request to small subdivision plat lots one and two, Coons Edition, replat one. And twelve A two, waiver of section six dash seven, seven subdivision regulations. Okay, item thirteen ordinances for introduction, first reading, we have none this evening. Item fourteen, public hearing on matters other than ordinances. Fourteen A recommend approval of event application for Greater Bellevue Area Chamber of Commerce, Bellevue Economic Enhancement Foundation for the Nebraska, for the Nebraska's official veterans parade on Saturday, November sixth, two thousand twenty-one, from seven A M to twelve P M utilizing Mission Avenue to Franklin Street ending at Washington Park. And I will open that up for public hearing for the event application. So if there's anyone here wanting to speak regarding the event, please come forward. Anyone wanting to speak, come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close that public hearing. Do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve fourteen A.
Second.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item fourteen B request for site plan approval for lot one, Tregarin Town Center replat six for the purpose of a car wash. Applicant, Club Car Wash Operating LLC. General location, twenty-second Street and Cape Hart Road. And I will open fourteen B up for public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak regarding the applicant, the application?
Mayor Kirk Daniels with Cochran Engineering. I'm here representing the owner. Do you want me to do the presentation now or when's the best time?
Now would be the best time.
Now would be the best time.
Yep.
Again, good evening, Kirk Daniels with Cochran Engineering, representing Club Car Wash. I appreciate all your time tonight. So I'll make this short and sweet because you got a pretty full agenda. So, um, what we're bringing before you tonight is a site plan approval for a club car wash. It's approximately a fifty-six hundred plus or minus automated car wash. We have sixteen vac bays on the west side of the, of the, uh, building. Uh, the automated car wash, you'd actually enter from the north side and you'd exit on the south side. On, uh, the street down below, we'd have two access points that'd be full access points. And then over to the west side, we would have a limited right in and right out access point. It's a car wash. The owner of this car wash, he maintains them very impeccable. Uh, there's a couple of them in Omaha. He takes very, very good care of them. Our stormwater detention on this would be up at the northwest corner of this site. Uh, just to give you a little example of what they look like, this is how the typical club car washes look. Uh, very similar to the one, uh, up in Omaha right now. Uh, just the views from the north, south, east and west. And with that, it's very brief. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
The only question, I guess Pammy's, Pammy Tammy's pro, uh, reviewed this, so, um, stacking areas, we, we are good on that, right?
We are good, yes.
Any other questions for the applicant? Yep, Councilman Cook?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Just to be clear, I, I don't know if you described your entrance as at the right location. I think you said on the north side of the lot. It'd be on the.
It'd be on the south side.
Yeah.
It'd be on the south side. Two access points on the south and then one on the west. I apologize.
And then you're aware that there's a median on the road where you exit on the west side that traffic then is required to go.
Yes, right in and right out. Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Sir, could we have you sign in too so we can get the spelling? Thank you.
Okay, the public hearing is open. If there's anyone wanting to speak regarding the club car wash operating application, please come forward. Anyone else wanting to speak regarding the car wash? Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Councilman Stinson? Oh.
Make the motion. We approve fourteen B.
I'll second.
Motion by Stinson, seconded by Cook. Any discussion now? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Okay, thank you for being present.
Thank you.
Item fourteen C, public hearing on declaring lots one through six and part of lots seven through eleven A lying south and west of Harville Drive. Lots eleven B and twelve, block one seventy, Bellevue. Lots one through twelve, block one seventy-one, Bellevue. Vacated seventeenth Avenue between Jefferson Street and Franklin Street and the adjacent right of ways of West Sixteenth Avenue, Harville Drive, Franklin Street, West Eighteenth Avenue and Jefferson Street as blighted and substandard. Uh, applicant is Mercury Builders and Contractors, Inc. General location, West Eighteenth Avenue and Jefferson Street. And I will give the applicant a chance to come forward first, but I will open the public hearing. So if the applicant would come forward, please state your name, sign in.
Good evening. I'll get started while Jeff is signing in. Uh, Andrew Willis, two thirty-three South Thirteenth Street, Lincoln, Nebraska with, uh, the applicant, attorney for the applicant. So before you deny the, uh, the blight study, uh, and, and, and the resolution to declare the, uh, Jefferson Place project site blighted and substandard. This has been the planning commission. Planning commission has made the recommendation, uh, to this board to declare the property blighted and substandard as well. And so the first step in this is we go forward is really, you know, this is, this is step one of many, and you've done redevelopment projects before, obviously. So, uh, if, if this area is declared blighted and substandard, uh, the next step will be that it will, uh, have a redevelopment plan. Oh, thanks. Perfect decision. Go ahead. Perfect. Uh, the, um, then the next step will be redevelopment plan that talks about the plan for the redevelopment. So then we'll get into the specifics of the project. Um, and then ultimately, uh, the idea is, the purpose of this is so that we can utilize tax income and financing. So today is just the blight study. That's first step in order to, you know, if, uh, if this is declared blighted and substandard, then we can come forward to plan and, and the project. Under the community development law, again, when we look at these blighted and substandard, um, you know, the, the, they're, they're terms that are defined in the statute. And the, they're both, we have blighted and substandard, they're about the same, about the same terminology, but, but have a little bit of a difference. And so you, with blighted, you look at first at the subjective criteria, you know, by reason of, of the presence of a, a substantial number of deteriorating structures, the existence of defective, uh, utilities, defective site improvements, unsafe conditions, deterioration of the site, diversity of ownership, tax, uh, tax parcel issues, uh, defective conditions of title, improper plating, uh, or the existence of any conditions that endanger life or property or any combination of those things. It's, it's, it's not a, you don't have to tick off every single one of those, but we need to hit um, some, some mass of those. And it's, it's, those are the subjective criteria. Then the, uh, blight definition requires one of the, of the five objective criteria, one of which is that the average age of the buildings is more than forty years. And, uh, I'll highlight that one because that's where, that's where the study really goes. And then, uh, the substantial, uh, sorry, the substandard definition is very close to the same. Uh, you're looking at the substructures, you know, if there's dilap, you know, a predominance or a, a substantial number of buildings or improvements that are dilapidated. Um, by reason of, by age or obsolescence, again, to go to age and obsolescence there, uh, that there's problems. And, um, and, or if there's any of the conditions that are, you know, conducive to ill health, um, et cetera, et cetera. Very similar to that, that blighted definition, but really hitting both. And that's where the blight study comes in, and that's what J E O, uh, has presented is that study to, to go through that community development law criteria and see if this specific parcel or specific site meets that requirement. Uh, a couple of key points, and then I'll let, uh, Jeff talk about the more specifics of the study. Um, you know, again, we, we, we talked about both the blighted and the substandard definition, which are while close, they're both addressed in the, in the study. Um, you don't have to hit every factor. It's, it's not a mathematical check every box. It's, it's more of a, the idea is to look at the entire, uh, site and to see if, uh, there's a certain number of those criteria and enough to, to make that decision that this area really warrants the potential redevelopment or, or, you know, to create a redevelopment plan and, and potentially the use of TIF. Um, also, it doesn't mean that every single part, you know, every single parcel, every single structure in that area is blighted and substandard. They called us the area rule, uh, the, the Supreme Court has called that the area rule where we look at the entire area. We look at the factors of the entire area. So all the parcels that are part of this study. Uh, and again, it doesn't mean that every single, um, home is blighted. It doesn't mean that every single lot has to have every single one of those characters. We look kind of the totality, totality of all those circumstances. Um, I just wanted to point that out as we're looking, as we're looking, um, through this study and, and, and knowing that there, you know, some, uh, there are some questions of what, what does that mean when your house is blighted or your property is blighted? And, and I would say it does, I mean, it does, the study doesn't, or the determination that this area is blighted and substandard doesn't mean any one specific lot is blighted and substandard. There is no effect on the property values from an overall, you know, big picture of what, of an effect in the assessment. And it doesn't mean there's a judgment on any single lot. It means that over the entire character, over the entire area, these criteria have been determined to be, to be present in a, in a predominant, um, number. With that, as sort of the lead in, um, I'll let Jeff talk about the very specifics in this blight and substandard study.
Thank you, Andrew. Uh, Jeff Ray with J E O Consulting Group, one one two one three, Davenport Street, Omaha, Nebraska. Um, I'm the planner that actually conducted the study, um, so I can go through some of the details, I hit some of the highlights in the summary of what was actually done there and, and why we were doing that. I wish as a planner that, uh, we didn't call these blight and substandard determination studies, but that's what the state statute has left us to call them. Um, that is a very negative name for a economic development tool. Um, so I'll go through the study here quickly to, uh, show you where we're at. So the study area was, uh, delineated after conversations with, uh, the developer client and legal counsel as well as some of the staff um, here at the city to determine where, what area should be studied or shouldn't be studied. Uh, we always try to use some definitive boundary so people can understand what is actually in and what isn't out. Um, it's not just some geopolitical line that's out there that we're not actually sure where it's at in a field or something. So, um, we do that. We do a boundary that's more than one parcel. We're not allowed just to do one parcel to benefit one specific property owner. So here you can see it consists approximately of, uh, two blocks and a vacated area of Seventeenth Street. It's bound by public right of ways. Um, and it was chosen, um, specifically for potential for redevelopment, uh, on a portion of this site um, as well as the characteristics of blight and substandardness that were to be present. So I'll go through these and then, um, see what questions you have. So overall, it was found that, uh, the street layout was inadequate or there's some lack of public streets and public right of way or, uh, not public right of way, public access pedestrian as well as vehicular. Um, and as you know, the streets are the first, um, component really in our s- storm strain system. Um, so that's a critical piece of it is the gutters, um, start directing that to the storm drains. Um, all these pictures are taken from within this area, um, to highlight some of those, um, specific examples of what was, uh, documented in the study, um, that was there. Lot layouts, uh, the lots were looked at, they're irregular in shape. Um, a few and many of them were irregular in size. Um, some were narrow, some were square, rectangular. Um, and they varied out throughout that. And then a few of them lacked actual access to public streets um, directly and had, um, extended driveways over those areas. Um, there are areas that we call potentially unsafe conditions. Um, we looked at debris piles that were around. I understand that this study was conducted shortly after that we had a major windstorm. Um, and there were some branches that were down. I have since gone back and looked back at the area. Some of those branches have been removed. Um, but that was a very minor component of the overall study. And if we removed that from the study, the conclusion of potentially unsafe conditions would still be found um, to be a significant component and would still found to be relevant throughout the entire study and would not change the conclusion. Uh, due to the other items that were listed here, um, of drainage and standing water, um, the age of the structures, um, the lack of sidewalks, um, and so forth that were found to be in that area. Um, that upper left-hand corner, that branch, um, has definitely been removed since then. As we mentioned, ages structures, so this information came directly from the county assessor. Um, it gives us a very specific amount. Um, all structures except for one were actually built prior to nineteen eighty-one or forty years of age. This is the legislature's number. Um, they said forty years of age is, is old structure, not mine. Forty years seems young to me at this point. When we do our analysis, we turn on all of the layers in a G I S type system to say where these are present or not present. Um, and every lot within the area did indeed have at least one characteristic of blighted, uh, and substandard. Um, so overall, our recommendation is that you would declare this area as blighted and substandard. There's a summary criteria table there. Um, even if we removed the one item for some extra debris that was there, um, it would still be overwhelming that the preponderance of evidence that these characteristics are present, uh, throughout to this district. Um, and that, uh, nine of the twelve blighted conditions were found to be significant. And three of the four substandard conditions were found to be significant. So with that, Mr. Mayor, council, answer questions now or later.
Jeff, do you have a, just a little background on J E O?
On J E O?
Yep.
Sure. Uh, J E O is, uh, about two hundred and seventy individuals. We're predominantly a civil engineering land development firm, uh, located, uh, in eleven different offices throughout Iowa, Nebraska and Kansas, headquartered out of Wahoo. I've been with them personally for ten years. Um, I've been practicing planning since, uh, nineteen ninety-two. Um, where I completed a bachelor's degree in architecture from Nebraska and a master's in community regional planning in Nebraska and wrote my graduate thesis on utilization of the Nebraska Community Development Law, um, which is what we did tonight with the community. At planners, uh, we have a planning group, we have architecture group, we have surveyor, we have engineers. Um, it worked predominantly, uh, throughout Iowa, Nebraska and, uh, Kansas now.
Okay, appreciate it. Any other questions? Always up here from the council. Yep, Councilwoman Welch?
Um, just a quick question, Jeff. Where you talked about this recommended area and there's sixteen items there. If you hit one of those, does that qualify for the standard or does it, it does have to be a majority number?
It, it does not have to be a majority. Um, and there is no case law that I'm aware of. I'll let Andrew maybe answer that question since it's much more of a legal question. Um, generally, it's been my practice over the last twenty-five plus years that, um, if the majority are there, that's when it happens. Then the few cases where I've seen that the majority of the characteristic is not there, either the area is modified or it doesn't, the, the study doesn't move forward. Um, but I'll, I'll let Andrew answer that question specifically.
Thanks. Um, yeah, the, there is, there's a couple criteria though. There is one set that, of one of them that has to be met. So there's, under the definition of blighted, uh, in eighteen dash twenty-one zero three, print, subsection three, there is the, there's the first A that lists out all, you know, presence of a substantial number of deteriorated, deteriorating structures, exist, existing of defective layout, streets, all those things we talked about. And that's, that's an or, and there's no, there's no, like, it doesn't have to be any one of those. It could be any combination of those. So it could be one if it's really bad. It could be all of them if there's a little bit. It, it, that's where that's subjective. Then the second part of the statute says at least one of the following has to be met. It lists out five things. Um, unemployment is at least hundred twenty percent of the national average. The average age of the structures is more than forty years. And so that's the one, um, and then three more if you're interested. But, but, uh, on this study, that's the one that you must have one of those, and that's what the forty years does check off that box. And, and other than that, it's really, that's, it's kind of looking at the, is, you know, is there enough of these factors present to, to make it make sense?
Cause it feels a little, um, or a lot, I would say, subjective. It's, it's not like it's, as an engineer, you know, it's black or it's white. This is way gray.
These are my terms, but I always call that first set the subjective criteria and then those. These are my terms, but I always call that first set the subjective criteria and then those last five the objective criteria, so I would say yes, it is, I mean, the statute's written to be subjective.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Stenson?
The pictures that you went back and took again after you had come through after a storm. That pretty much knocked power out in Bellevue for about five days, uh at least in parts of it, when did you retake the pictures that you're?
I I didn't actually retake pictures, I reviewed the site again on last Wednesday. Um to determine um what had been changed um during that, and there were, there were. Two locations that I noted that uh some of the limbs that were noted as debris piles had been removed. Uh but there still were some that I called debris piles that actually appeared to be probably pre-storm. Based off of the weathering of the wood and the cutting of the the stumps. Um that weren't fresh, um you can usually tell that, um so and they still are remaining in in some of that area.
Okay, was there any damage to the houses that you noticed that was part of your study as far as?
Um so I I did do a structural analysis and looked at that, all of the homes um to determine that, and that is in the study and they were noted in there. Um I will note that the the Planning Commission was a little surprised that I that I put in how I actually graded out the homes, but I feel that. In uh you're doing a study like this, you need to be as transparent as possible and say. Which homes are graded out as good and fair and poor, um those homes that were in there. Um there are some that were marked as deteriorating, in other words, um. Those homes would typically need a contractor to do something, new roofing, new siding, new windows, um those types of things. If it's painting or it's minor, that would not contribute to that to be considered deteriorating. Um and those were not found to be a significant factor throughout the study. Um so that was not a criteria overall in the recommendation.
So you didn't actually in go up and look at each house individually, you just?
I did look at each house individually when I did the analysis, but I didn't find that greater than fifty percent of them. Uh were deteriorating enough to warrant them to be considered a significant factor. So if you look, the very first criteria, the structural condition, there's a no there. So I said that that criteria was not met at a significant enough level to be considering. As a contributing factor to the blighted and substandard, so the individual structures, whether it was from storm or. Uh just uh maintenance over the years, um many of the homes look like they had been maintained very well. Um so I felt that that was not a contributing factor to the study and wasn't relevant to the study.
Okay, and did that include the lead and the paint also, or is that a different criteria?
Uh lead paint um is typically something you look at that would be pre nineteen seventy, um and there are several of those that are pre nineteen seventy.
Okay, did you do any studies, take paint chips or anything?
No, this was all observation from the public right away.
That's all I have for right now.
Councilman Prester?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you for the information, can you tell me why you picked this specific area? I know you said that it has to be more than one particular parcel, but you have to draw a line somewhere. Why this inclusive area?
Yeah, so I'll go back to the study area map here. So this area was was delineated because um of the potential for development in the northern third portion of this site. Um and their desire to use tax increment financing ultimately, which would be the economic development tool that would come out of this. Uh so looking at that, I looked at what are the contiguous properties within that area? And because the Seventeenth Street had been vacated, I went with the two concent- concentric blocks that were there. Um and went around the public right of way to delineate that. Um there could have gone multiple directions. Either direction, north, south, east or west, as you know, much of Old Town probably could be blighted, the terms in the state statute. Uh are fairly broad and meant to be construed liberally, um it's not hard to to blight. Many communities, particularly in the older community area. Um but we want to be prudent in how much we actually do, because you do have a limitation on. The percentage of your area that you can actually blight, which is a thirty-five percent maximum. You're not anywhere close to that, I believe you're in the nine percent range. Um but if there's really no opportunities that we're aware of or the city's aware of to do additional redevelopment. Um in this proximity, it doesn't really make sense just to include additional properties. Um and degrade your potential opportunity for other percentages someplace else that may be necessary in the future.
And you chose to go to Eighteenth Avenue rather than the vacated Seventeenth? Uh you could have stopped at Seventeenth, is that right?
Stop at Vacated Seventeenth, but there wasn't a real clear delineation as to where that actually comes through. Uh with the property lines, so I tend to try to stick with the public right of way lines. Um where the streets are to make it easier for citizens and planning commission as well as city council to understand what area is in and what area isn't in.
Okay, thank you.
And the only thing I would add to that is, I mean, and as Jeff already mentioned, under state statute, there is, there's no size. Limitation other than uh in this community, you can't have more than thirty-five percent of the total area blighted, declared blighted, other than that. There's no size specifically for like how big a blight study or blight area should be or how small it should be, and we've, some are very large, some are very small. Uh the Supreme Court has said that it should be more than a parcel, I mean, it is meant to be an area, which could be a couple of parcels, but it does, but it is meant to be. Bigger, so it's, so it is sort of, you know, Jeff's rationale of going to those public right of ways makes some sense. Um it's it's his practice, but it it does make some sense because the idea is to create an area. It can be a small area or a large area, but it should be more than just the parcel that you, you know, specifically want to look at, and that's, that's really all the. Legal guidance there is.
The blighted designation has a benefit for a developer in providing some additional funding to help fund the development. Do you see any benefit to the commu- to the neighbors, the immediate neighbors, besides the community at large?
Uh the 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 only effect of the blight designation is the potential for redevelopment, so um. I would say it has no effect if a person just wants to continue to use their property as is, if they want to sell. To a potential developer theoretically, maybe you you've now, there's now an economic incentive that's available in that blighted area. Um so that would be a positive, but that's not, I mean, there's no immediate positive effect if you don't want to do anything with the property. Um really, the only effect of it is to allow for the use of tax increment financing. Um there, there's another, you know, there's a, there's another. Declaration beyond this called extremely blighted, and if you do that, there's some property tax credits when you sell your house, but that's not, that's not a part of this at all, so I would say this. Doesn't, I mean, if uh if a property owner does not want to do anything, develop, redevelop their property. It it should have no effect on their property whatsoever, it won't change the assessed values, the assessor shouldn't look at that, it it's just not part of the. It's not not part of the calculus, because again, it doesn't, it doesn't make any determination about any specific lot, it just creates an area. That can be used, uh that you can use tax increment financing in, again, if uh, I guess, both, I would echo. Jeff, if I if I got to, you know, if the legislator listened to me, I would change that to a different terminology and not call it blighted and substandard, but that's the terminology we're stuck with.
And since you mentioned that, I I think it would be helpful for this body and maybe the Sarpy Cities. To work with our legislature, because the language in here has been upsetting to people for years and years. And I think it's unfortunate, a redevelopment or some different type of designation would be much less offensive.
Absolutely.
Would not insult people who have worked hard, so I think the United Sarpy Cities and. Our legislative delegation from Bellevue is already aware of the problems. So I think it's after the fact for this case, but I think it would be good for this body to certainly recommend that. To our legislators, I know there's been attempts to change the law at least four years ago, and there was an interim study last year. But I think we need to work on that in this upcoming session, so I'm glad both of you brought that up.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Walsh?
Okay, so I just, something I need to have clarified just in my head, okay? Based off of your sixteen items, in this neighborhood, if if the houses are in, there, let's say there was no. Storm, tree damage is not there, the houses are in perfect condition, but they are forty years old. But they're in perfect condition, nobody needs any upkeep, we still could make this as a blighted area because of the age. And possibly the street layout.
That is correct.
So it has nothing to do with the people, their houses, the conditions, none of that, and this is strictly to get this set up. For the developer to be able to use government financing to be able to develop into that. To do development work in there, because it's going to be very costly for what they're wanting to do, correct?
Yeah, there's a redevelopment plan that eventually comes and then with that would be a tax increment financing agreement with with you all. Um so those are some additional steps that would be potentially coming, this is the first step in that process. Uh but you're absolutely correct, um all of these houses, um you know, could be in in perfect condition. Um and in the area would still qualify.
And you could hit it for, because they're over forty years old and maybe the street layout wasn't the best.
You could have, yeah, you could theoretically have an area with hundred year old houses that are beautiful and in perfect condition. And then some lots that don't have proper infrastructure put up to them, or you know, some, or you know, and those lots are the wrong, you know, kind of. Smaller than they normally would be now, because they were built a hundred years ago, I mean, you could think of a situation where you have a a beautiful, nice neighborhood, it would still. Qualify under the legal definition of.
Right, and something that I just wanted to say, after being in the, in real estate for thirty-one years. I've never had it come up on a lender, title, seller, buyers, nobody knows that this is. Quote unquote blighted, and I agree with what you've said, it would be nice if they change it, the wording to. It's an opportunity for redevelopment, because I think that comes across way better. It's simply to be able to help redevelopment, get the TIF financing.
That's sure, make our jobs easier if they had a different name.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Stenson?
Just one more question, uh going off the forty years. Other than that, looking at the pictures, it looks like most of the violations are on the property that you bought, is, would you say that's accurate?
Uh there are some, there's a lack of sidewalks really throughout, um the lack of uh streets. Um and there are some additional um storm inlet, infrastructure issues um kind of throughout. Um trying to remember what else, um some of the other criteria in there are like diversity of ownership, so are there, is it just. Benefiting one property owner, which we talked about, so uh obviously that has to be looked at from an area perspective. Um and you can't really say that it's just specifically on one site, uh but there were characteristics that were found on on every, on every parcel. Um including, you know, some that were found to um be deteriorating structurally in need of um. Siding and or windows or or uh shingles and those types of things.
I think one of the ones that you cited is, Dale, they were getting ready to paint that house, and that house has been painted since then. I've been through that area several times in the last two weeks since the planning meeting and. All the homes, from what I see, are in good shape, uh the one that had some paint scratched off. And stuff, they were getting it ready to be painted, it's been painted, uh there's only one that I know of that stills got a gutter problem. But I had talked to the owner on that, and they were waiting for the insurance company to uh buy, and that's because. The tree actually fell on the corner of the house during that storm. Uh I don't see other than your forty years, I don't see where there's really any violations in that area. That looking at it, the lot size, it's, yeah, it's an old part of Bellevue, it's been that way for years. On the lot sizes and things like that, but uh the most violations I seen actually were on the area that. Is purchased by your client then, so.
I guess the the one thing I I would just reiterate again is that the structural condition, while while he's mentioning some of those those factors. Was not one of the criteria that is part of the conclusion that this area qualifies as blighted and substandard, so to to. Ignore the houses completely, still on that recommendation on the chart up there, doesn't, I mean, that's the the. Well mentioned and and brought out in the study, it isn't part of that overall criteria. Um things like lot layouts, the smaller lots that were built a long time ago, again, the idea is that's. By statute de- defined as as an inadequate lot layout, it doesn't mean that somebody who has a house on there, that there's a, that they personally. I don't know, feel a defective lot, it means that uh based on the current standards. Of of what, you know, I guess what you'd now develop or you know, plaid out as a developable lot, those are smaller or misshapen or something, so again, it's not a. I I try not to have any judgment in the idea that you say it's an inadequate lot layout, because that's just inadequate. As would be platted out now versus, well, that's how they were, that's how it was done. Uh and that's how most of the town was done a long time ago, well, yes, and that's why statutorily it meets that definition.
Many of those houses are are very nice and in good condition.
So before we move on to the public hearing on, I just want to add, somebody brought up the benefit of the blight, I don't think that was touched on enough, I think. Having that blighted, if this developer, if Mercury Builders builds a nice five million dollar development or whatever the number is. On that lot, and they want to say, hey, look, this worked out pretty well. We want to put thirty-five more condos in this area, and they go to everybody and offer them a hundred and fifty percent of their current value, I mean, they could. Purchase all those homes, remove them and put a whole new development in there, so that's, that's part of the process of of. Growing, that's part of the process of how how towns change over.
If those owners wanted to sell, one, one question that comes up often, uh it hasn't came up here, but in in these hearings is. There's no, once your air, once your, again, the the term blighted and substandard, it doesn't create any new rights, there's no rights involved. It doesn't open up an an easier route to eminent domain or taking or or purchase, if anything, again, it probably makes it easier to. Increase that price level if somebody wants to sell it, uh if if you want to sell your own house, because you're now have, it's in a redevelopment area, but there's no. Uh it doesn't make it any easier for somebody to purchase your house from you.
Okay, we'll stick around, stay close, and we'll open, we'll keep the public hearing open, and if there's anybody in here that would like to speak regarding. Item fourteen C, please come forward, I'll ask you to uh state your name and sign in the book. And you'll have five minutes to talk and we'll move to the next person.
Hello, my name's Connie Golden, I live at seventeen twelve Franklin Street. That is the corner of Franklin and Eighteenth Avenue. Um I'm kind of speaking for my husband and I, he couldn't make it tonight, he wasn't feeling well, but we both object. Um I have many reasons why, uh one thing that hasn't been coming up, no one's talking about is traffic. Um they're gonna put in ten units, so you have ten units, I'm glad you're showing some of the pictures. Um there's ten units, that'll be at least twenty cars in a little area, because that's going to be kind of cramped in there. Um they're gonna go down, some of them are gonna come out of Jefferson Street, come down, which will make it more busy on Jefferson. They'll turn left and then it'll be on Eighteenth Avenue. And come on down there, more busy, and then on to Franklin, which right now is, has plenty of traffic. I live facing Franklin, and it's crazy there sometimes of the day, so there will be a lot more traffic. We're not too crazy about that, uh another thing is just as simple as, a lot of us just love the area. There's trees, there's animals, we have, you know, several kinds of deer coming through, and there was even a fox the other day. And these townhomes are gonna just come right in and destroy that area too. They say they might leave a few trees, but I, I, we don't have no proof they'll do that. Um and that would be tearing down all the the area that people come down Harville and like. Um I don't like the whole blighted and substandard, I know that that's just terms, but. Uh no one could give me an answer of how long that lasts. I I mean, if they're gonna build these, are we gonna be blighted and some standard forever? I mean, I really think that that should be a term that ta- is taken away if they did build these. Cause we don't want that hanging over our heads. Um also, we've been burned before on people of Franklin by the city council, and it wasn't none of you guys, but. Um we all fought off uh two duplexes on Franklin Street. And it's not on that the side, it's on the other side, but these duplexes were never finished. One of them never was completed at all, the other one, um. The other one is just a mess. It's it's all falling apart on the back and Bob has pictures if you want, ever want to see them. And so we got kind of burned on that because that's been bad ever since they built them. And I just think that a lot of people wouldn't be so upset about this whole thing if they were just going to build a single family home or something up there or on that end. But ten units is a lot and it's going to be all crammed in this little area. I just don't know how they're going to do it. I mean, I've walked around there over and over again and I don't know how they're going to do it. It's just going to be. Also, I just wanted to thank all the members who did come by and see the area and talk to people. That was very appreciated and that's mine. Thank you.
Thank you for coming and you did send us a letter, right? Was that you that sent the letter?
Uh, no, there was a lady on our street on Franklin that she couldn't make it, her husband is ill and so she did send, I hope you do read it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Everybody has copies.
All right.
Thank you.
I just want to make a comment really quick after that one. If you're speaking, come up and sign in for the next one while I'm talking. But I guess to answer the question on blight and substandard really quick, the designation is forever at this point. There's no avenue in the Nebraska statutes that unblight something. That's something that we can certainly have conversations with, with our state legislature. It's way above what we have the ability to do here, but currently there's no avenue to unblight, but we'll add that to the list to have a conversation. And then I just wanted to point out for the other people speaking that tonight is just blighting and substandard, doing a blight and substandard designation. There's a redevelopment plan that would have to be next and in that redevelopment plan, they would outline exactly what they want to do, whether it's ten units, whether it's three units, traffic flow, landscaping, all of that stuff. And that's something that will be vetted through the planning department and will be on before the city council for comment as well. So tonight is simply blighted and substandard. The traffic and all that other stuff is at a later date.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Matt Griffith. I live at seventeen oh one Franklin Street, so across the street from the blighted designation possibility. And I really just, first of all, my wife would be here, but she's at home with our young boys and but we both strongly object to to this. The idea of developing the the lots in question, it's just really unnecessary. As Connie pointed out just a moment ago, there are two lots that are sitting vacant, have been for at least five years, if not longer, a four unit duplex and a three unit triplex, I guess. They're they're mowed and that sort of stuff, but the buildings are not in good shape and one of them directly next to my property has never been inhabited, still has stickers on the windows. The idea that when I came to not the planning committee, but the meeting at the library with the developer to talk about the plan, he was not aware of those properties. Somebody had approached him specifically about this plot of land and nobody has developed this because it's not suitable for development, especially ten units. It's it's a very steep hillside, it's tree growth and there are drainage problems at the bottom of this steep hill. As you guys probably are aware, there's a very large storm culvert at the bottom of that area. And so developing this, ten, ten units, families, possibly with kids. I I'm concerned about safety of that culvert because I know kids, they're they're going to go down and explore that area. In addition to that, the habitat loss, I mean, I'm very frustrated by the loss of trees in Old Town between Washington Park, the development of the condos or retail space and the lot next to it. There's several blocks where there's only one tree providing shade on Franklin Street. And Bellevue, I think, has always been seen as a green city. It's the trees are part of its character. That's one of the reasons I moved to Old Town. I've been there since two, twenty twelve. And, you know, it's, so besides the scenery, what Connie again mentioned with the drive down Harville onto Franklin, I think is iconic to Old Town Bellevue. It's very peaceful, it's green, it's says this is different than the old market or this is different than most city centers. And I know that the city has, we want to make Old Town a special place, but I think we can do development and not destroy the character of Old Town. In addition to that, the developer said that he would look at those other properties, but again, it just seems like we're putting the cart before the horse on declaring this area potentially blighted and substandard before we've looked at other opportunities. Is this the best use of tax increment financing? What is the city getting out of this? Yes, it's five properties, but you're not going to be seeing tax revenue on this for whatever the period that's agreed on in the tax increment financing, if I'm understanding the law correctly. So is it going to be ten years before the city sees any benefit? And the the planning as it's been looked at or what I've seen of it so far, there are no improvements to to Jefferson Street. There are, it's not doing anything to the infrastructure. And so I guess my question to all of you is, is this the best place to do this? Because it really doesn't feel like it to me and I guess that's all I've got to say at this time. I'll be back if it progresses forward.
Thank you. Anyone else wanting to speak, please come forward.
Hi, Chris Southell here with Diane Lecker of seventeen oh three Jefferson. We share a lot of the concerns, I guess, that have already been stated by the other neighbors in the area with the the density of the potential development. Again, we haven't seen any plans yet, the infrastructure, the traffic on the street, these kinds of things. But speaking just specifically to just the the zoning and classifying this as a blighted area, whatever, and we kind of addressed, you know, terms have meaning. It seems that we're just kind of being used as pawns in the game, so to speak. There's really no potential upside for any of the homeowners in the area. We're being, those targeted, those properties are being targeted as as blighted for the advantage of the developers and and their connected partners so they can unlock additional financing and make this a more profitable venture. But there's, there's nothing in it for the greater community as we see it in the area. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. I know it's come up a couple of times. I'll just add the duplexes, the first two people talked about the duplexes across the street. Our chief building inspector is is moving forward on taking care of those properties or or addressing those properties as well, so.
My name's Tony Boyd. I live at seventeen oh one Jefferson, basically abutting right to the property in question. Everybody keeps saying that the development has no bearing on tonight, but the blighted and substandard classification directly correlates to the development itself. So if you don't talk about the development, you can't talk about the blighted and substandard classification. I'd just first like to point out, the study itself, I asked in the planning commission meeting if anybody had verified any of the information in this study, of which I was told nobody in the planning commission or the city administration had verified any of this. So the deterioration, the safety hazards, any of that is at question and based on a biased study done by the company hired by the developer whose best interest is to blight and substandard, this area, I think, brings this whole study into question and needs some classification, clarification on a lot of these. Also, the study itself is out of dates in its own, in its own study. It states Nebraska subsec, Nebraska statute eighteen dash two oh one, twenty one oh three subsection ten, that was updated in May of twenty twenty one. This study was done in July of twenty twenty one. So if that one portion is out of date by the Nebraska statute, what else in this study is out of date and not to the letter of the law? As Mr. Stenson had pointed out, all of the classifications that would make this a blighted or substandard area, ninety-five percent of them occur on the property in question that was purchased by Mercury. The deteriorated or deteriorating structures, one of the pictures that were depicted in this study was of an approach on a driveway, block approach on a driveway, which was not structural in nature and does not need a contractor to repair. The other deteriorating structures that were noted in the study were not to the letter of the law under the Nebraska statute for blighted and substandard as it does not address up to a quarter of that potential area such as the foundation wall that was cracked. It needs to be up to a quarter of that foundation. So that's gone. The defective or inadequate street layout, again, you keep saying that the development is not in question here, but the TIF, the blight and substandard, the inadequate street layout directly correlates with the development itself. We were shown plans for the development. They are only going to extend Jefferson Street further north, not continue it down. So that's just going to make the inadequate street layout worse, parking worse, there is no parking on Jefferson Street as it is. And then coming off of Sixteenth Ave as well to be a cul-de-sac circle to where, again, inadequate street layout. Unsanitary or unsafe conditions, topography and terrain, again, the development, they do not want to change the topography or the terrain, so therefore they're doing nothing to increase the blighter substandard conditions. Vegetation overgrowth, again, only vegetation overgrowth is on their property. Had this been a property with a dwelling or a private citizen property, city would have red tagged that and condemned it years ago because if it's so unsafe, so hazardous to public health and safety, city should have red tagged. We've asked, no attempt has been made to eradicate the public health, safety or public health hazard. Sidewalks, they're not adding any sidewalks for their plan. Sorry. And the drainage and it, the drainage, that is all city infrastructure. If this has been such a problem, why has the current property owner, previous property owner not brought it to the city's attention to have the city address these issues as it is? City right of way, city drainage. It was told to us that this property was, this development plan was brought to them by the previous owners. I've grown up in Bellevue, I've born and raised here. Grandparents built the first house on the boulevard, brother still lives there. My grandfather worked it off it over half his life, served in the air force. I've had chances to come back to leave, move out and I didn't because I'm from Bellevue and it holds a, it holds a special place for me. I still coach here, I coached the high school, the middle school. And to have somebody come in to try to basically just make money off of the rest of us who have, they have no hat in the game, no skin in the game, all they're worried about is their bottom dollar, when all they're going to do is just make things worse for everybody else in this neighborhood. I just hope that you hear everybody here and do what we voted you to do, voted you in to do is be our voice in something like this because we, we have no voice here, you guys are our voice, we voiced our opinion to you, we just hope that you guys make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wanting to speak?
Hi, I'm Bernard Kusek, eighteen oh two Jefferson, and I'm against it for the aesthetics that should come around Harland Drive. And I know we cannot protest laws here, but we had supposedly a pastor from Bellevue Christian Center saying that we're all here doing the right thing. And I'm just saying, forty year rule for blighted and substandard. Well, I'm over forty and I got some issues that are a little bit of signs of deterioration. So that fits a lot of things. There's no word in there about anything about being a safety hazard or where is the medical reports from something actually happened? No one goes up there. Sidewalks, no one walks that hill. Most people, ninety percent of most people can't walk that hill, which is fine. Number three, going on to also about the drains and everything, it's the old city infrastructure. Nothing is changing. We are not gaining anything. We're not having a better environment or taking out trees. And I just think the whole thing of blighted and substandard is just a ploy for someone to pad their pocket.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kim Maak. I'm actually a military spouse, I'm originally from Germany. My husband is deployed. So we bought our house, we're living on one ten West Eighteenth Avenue. We bought our house last year because it has so much charm. And thinking about just having like, we were not looking for a cookie cutter home. So we would have not gone with a new construction and we put, I don't know, if you look at the, just the tax assessor, basically. Our, the previous owner of the home bought the house four years ago for like seventy-two thousand dollars. She put a lot of work into that home and we bought it last year for a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And it was assessed that way, the, yeah, it, I don't know, the appraisal came back all right. I also work in the mortgage industry, so, yeah, that's kind of where it ties together. And we put in a lot of work into our backyard and I know that most of the neighbors keep up with their properties really well. The picture with the debris in the front yard, that's also our property. Again, my husband is deployed, so we don't have a truck. Everything takes a little longer and I'm sure most of you are well aware that if you hire a contractor, sometimes it takes a couple of weeks if they even call you back for them to come out. So all in all, it's just, obviously older properties are upkeep, but they have a lot of charm regarding. The deer that come by out of the basically undeveloped area, I don't know, we just have a lot of wildlife there and I think if we take away the woods in that area, we will not have that wildlife in Old Town Bellevue. And part of that is old growth trees, so yeah, there will be some debris that is normal as long as it's being taken care of. And I know that the whole like blight and substandard definition is unlucky, I guess, but it just, it feels like a wrong designation for the area because none of the structures are structurally unsound or unsafe for people. And that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your husband's service as well. Anyone else wanting to speak, please come forward. Anyone else wanting to speak? Please come forward.
Hi. First off, I'll say my name's James Conkey, seventeen oh six Franklin Street. And I am horrible at public speaking. Alright, so just don't expect anything fantastic here. I wasn't gonna come up here because I think everybody pretty much said it. Everything that I've been thinking. What about the deer? It's part of why I'm here. The day we saw the house eight years ago. There was two in the backyard. That was it. That's what did it. Our very first family outing was two there. It's just up the alley from my house. We had a little picnic. Excellent, excellent job. It it worked and thank you. I guess uh, everything that I would say be in, would be entirely anecdotal. But I guess I don't understand this process. When did diversity of ownership, when did that become a bad thing? I thought that was what we do here. We all have our own little piece. And I don't have anything against these gentlemen. I don't, I want everybody to prosper. But to prosper at the potential cost of another, is that how we do things? I don't think so. If they're able to develop this on their own dime, more power to them. Do I think they should? No. Because how can you in one hand say the roads and sidewalk are substandard? But then say, and we're gonna push a whole lot more people down it. Does that make sense? If they're not gonna improve it, how can you say it's bad? And then in the same breath say, but we're gonna put a whole bunch more stuff here on the end. He'd mentioned that he's got engineers. I hope they're very good at their job. Cause if you haven't personally seen that area. The matter more comes to mind as far as the way the sloping is. The deer, that's what I just keep coming back to. And not silly. We do have to progress. But I think we need to take a step back as Bree Robinson, just and I don't. Um, as you mentioned that the blighting is permanent, please keep that in mind when you make your vote. This isn't something to go, oh, do over. I guess that's really all I have to say, just. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wanting to speak?
My son-in-law spoke for me, but I wanna know if those houses are so bad. Why is code enforcement not doing something about it?
Can you say your name?
Came to my house.
Can you say your name, please?
Diane Liker, I'm sorry.
Diane Liker, okay, thank you.
Diane Liker and I live at seventeen oh three Jefferson. I didn't have, know all the rules in this town. And when I moved here, it was four years ago. And I had a code enforcement man come to my house and tell me that if I didn't. Mow the back alley, which I had no idea I had to do. They would do it and I would be charged. They didn't bother to say anything nice to me to begin with. And I look out and I see all these houses that need things done. And if court enforcement can't stand behind it, that's where your problem is. That's my feelings on the whole thing. I'm very upset about this. I bought that house and my yard is steep, very steep. It's hard for me to walk. But I like my house and I like all the people around it and the animals and they wanna take all this away from us and. There's not a dang sidewalk on Jefferson, so don't put it that was only that block that doesn't have it. I'm done.
Thank you.
I'm Patty Mitchell. I live at seventeen oh eight Franklin. And I just really have more of a question. Um, my house sits on Franklin Street, which is a major thoroughfare. It's also an emergency snow route. So of course we have sidewalks. So I don't know how you're gonna say that this area is substandard and blighted if that's your emergency route. And that's really all, besides the fact that I really like my deer.
Thank you. Anyone else wanting to speak? Please come forward.
Dustin Sheldon, seventeen ten Franklin Street. Um, I just wanna formally object to this. I agree with everything that they said about the matter. I don't believe this is a blighter substandard neighborhood and I don't think it should be labeled that way.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Please come forward. Anyone else wanting to speak? Please come forward. Okay, seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing on thirteen C. Oh, sorry. Fourteen C. She even put it in fourteen point for me. Item fifteen is the resolutions. Fifteen A. Is resolution number two zero two one dash three eight declaring lots one through six. And part of lots seven through eleven A lying south and west of Harville Drive. Lots eleven B and twelve, block one seventy Bellevue. Lots one through twelve, block one seventy-one Bellevue. Vacated seventeenth avenue between Jefferson Street and Franklin Street and the adjacent right of ways. Of West Sixteenth Avenue, Harville Drive, Franklin Street, West Eighteenth Avenue. And Jefferson Street as blighted and substandard. So need a motion. Councilman Cook?
I'll make a motion. We approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty-eight.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Now, if there's any discussion or questions, be the time to ask them from the council. Councilman Price.
Thank you, Mayor. There were some issues that were raised. I think a couple of them may have been addressed. But maybe we could get the developers to come back. I think they were taking notes and hopefully they can address some of those things that they heard from the. Public and then I may have a question or two as well.
So Don, typically after public hearing is closed, only staff and council can speak. So if you have specific questions for them, we'll have to open it back up for public hearing. Is it something that Tammy might be able to answer or that I might be able to answer? It's typically public hearing is the opportunity to ask non-staff questions.
And I didn't realize we were going over to the next one, so.
Oh, right. So actually we would have, there'd be, yeah, there'd have to be a motion.
Together and so I assumed. I shouldn't do that. Thank you. Uh. One of the things maybe Tammy then if you could answer, I'm. Needing to make my own decision on supporting or not supporting this designation. One of the things I I heard was the traffic. If we're putting ten units in there, where are those units going to entry, enter and exit? Is it gonna be sixteenth street?
So easy answer, Don, is we don't have the public hearing for the development at this point, so. Any questions that we're gonna discuss have to be related to the blight and substandard only, which. Specific questions about traffic and the potential development that will come later is not part of what's in front of you right now.
Right. I understand. Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Welch?
Tammy, can you um, talk about the process of if this designation is given? Then what happens, 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 then what happens?
Yes, so if this designation is approved, um, if the developer wants to move forward, they would have to submit a redevelopment plan. That would have to be specific to their property and their proposed development. Um, it would also include a site plan and it would lay out exactly what they wanna do with the property. Um, typically with a redevelopment plan and in this situation, you would also have a rezoning request and a plating request. All of which would be public hearings and would move through the public hearing process before planning commission and city council. Um, so that is the opportunity or the point at which we would discuss specifics in regards to the development.
So possibly they could hypothetically say they wanna put ten in and by the time it gets to this process, there may be three. I mean hypothetically.
Hypothetically, but again redevelopment plan has to be approved, redevelopment agreement has to be approved. And in this case.
Change in zoning has to be approved.
Correct.
So there's a lot more steps.
Yes, this is the first step in the process that opens up the entire area for uh, the potential of TIF. But that doesn't mean that there's any one TIF approved project. That is a separate process that would move through planning commission and city council.
So even if this is designated, it doesn't mean the TIF financing is approved because that's a separate opportunity then, okay? And I know we talked, what percentage of Bellevue is considered blighted?
Right now we have less than nine percent.
And we can go up to?
Thirty-five percent.
And it simply could be, you got a forty-year-old house.
For the blight. Um, and again, just to reiterate what Mr. Willis said. You know, there are certain requirements for the blight. Um, there are also um, certain requirements. Not certain requirements for the substandard, those are a bit more subjective, but yes, I mean. As the applicant has stated, if you don't look at the condition of houses at all, um, if you liberally construe those statutes. In according to their study and in staff's opinion, yes, you can meet the designation. Um, we have a blighted area that's just a couple of blocks to the south. That was done about ten years ago. The city did the entire Mission Avenue corridor. Approximately one block north, one block south, and then did several blocks north along Franklin. So yes, um. It's subjective, it's meant to be. That's the way the statute is written. And it has e- it even states in the community development law that the statute should be liberally construed.
So it could hypothetically be an area that's just straight land?
Not, not in my opinion. You couldn't just do, you know, one vacant parcel. You have to, as Mr. Ray pointed out. You're going to have to have more than one parcel. A vacant property in my opinion is not just simply going to meet a blight and substandard designation.
And if the redevelopment process gets started, I know that your department. Um, permits and inspections, I mean, all the community development all work very well together to make sure. We don't have properties like some of those that were, the ones that they're concerned about. That were built that have never been ha- inhabited.
Yeah, when these applications come in, you know, it it goes through. A review process long before it comes to the public hearing. So, you know, in a case like this, numerous city staff have looked at it. Um, plating, zoning, same thing. And yes, we have a permits and inspections department. That deals with the construction and the building side of it.
Perfect, thank you.
I've heard for thirty, forty years that something needs to be done with Old Town Bellevue. Um. That's a story that's been told over and over and over and nobody ever does anything. To bring on development, to increase our values, to get to a point where we can start lowering taxes. TIF financing is the only way, in my opinion, that you're ever gonna get anything to happen in Old Town Bellevue. And it is showing right now that uh, uh, it is bringing projects to the area. Um, I don't, fifteen years goes goes by really fast. Like I said, people have been saying do something for the last thirty or forty years. And nothing ever gets done, so. To, to say we're giving away the farm, that land sits there without anything on it for the next ten to fifteen years. You're not gaining anything, but at the end, it takes us, we just got out of a bridge meeting this morning. It takes twenty years, fifteen fastest, twenty years to build a bridge. So when we start adding value to our city today, it's gonna be here to pay for those items that that we need in the future. This does not, this is just a tool. It it does nothing to your values. Um, I know people are concerned. I've heard it over and over about uh. Um, their house was deteriorated. It has nothing to do with your house deteriorated. They said there's no. They said there's, there was no, nothing given. That was not weighted. Um, that was pretty much the whole, I mean, that was the biggest argument. The the wildlife, you're not gonna get deer to stop coming to Old Town Bellevue. I'm I'm telling you, that's, that's. Yeah, that that's not gonna happen, but I'm telling you, the the blighted, I hate the word blighted, sounds terrible, substandard's horrible. Um, we will work on getting that verbiage changed. Um, that's a legislative deal, but it is, it it's from the redevelopment act. This is what the state put this law in place to do. Was to allow cities to be able to utilize these tools and and that's what our city needs. I guess that's, that's my thoughts on it. So, Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. And I got a map that I was given at a meeting that I attended about the blighted areas in Bellevue. And here is Mission Street and I think it's a block or two, maybe north or south of. We're going down Fort Crook, we're going partially down Galvin Road, we're partially going down the old uh, Gal- uh, Harville. I mean, I I think the development that is potentially gonna be coming at our old buildings. On Mission that have been knocked into the ground, probably would not be a development that could take off without TIF financing. And hopefully we're gonna have, have new buildings down there soon, I hope. Um. But, but this is Mission Street. This is the beginning, the east part and this is where the west part of it. And you can see the blue on both sides, probably a block or two in most of the areas that are already blighted. Um, designation by the city. Here's Fort Crook. Here's part of Galvin, here's part of three seventy. I mean, it's a tool that we got, we don't have other tools. To encourage development down there in the older parts and and we need a tool. And I wish we could support and and I believe the mayor and we'll make sure he does, the mayor and city administrator. Gets with Sarpy Cities and says, let's rename it. I mean, it's a horrible. Name to use to think if this was an economic development area, everybody would probably be okay with it, with within reason. I I think it's a tool that the city has to take advantage of and use to to get better development. Down in our older parts of the city and li- listen, I grew up down in, on Mission Street, off of Mission Street. I've lived here sixty years. Um. I I I want all parts of this city to survive and 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 to to be very successful. Throughout this city, not just out west. I want downtown Mission, I want around Mission, I want the older parts. I wanna see development, I wanna see growth, I wanna see new development. We're getting some people using TIF that are gonna knock down buildings and rebuild them. That's all part of it and that's a tool that we have to use in this city to keep moving forward in my opinion. Thank you.
Councilman Burns?
Thanks, Mayor. A couple of things come to mind is, is that. Everybody here has said that there will be no negative impact on the neighborhood and the, the problem is that. Not one single neighbor wants the designation. Um, I know we're not talking about it tonight and it's later in the process. But all those neighbors also have stated they don't want the development. And I know that because I knocked on everyone's door with the exception of few who didn't answer. And I also wanna thank Councilman Bob Stinson, who. And I also wanna thank Councilman Bob Stinson, who also knocked doors, and I believe Jerry McCaw actually took time to go down there. So we're, we're forcing a designation that we can't change, that all those neighbors have said they don't want. And I understand that, you know, we talk about development, we talk about Old Town Bellevue, but what are we talking about when we say development? I mean, a lot of people are talking about Mission, but here we're talking about a residential neighborhood that is going to impact this portion. And when we talk about trees and forestry, that is a part of our city, and I think people made great points about that. Um, and I think sometimes that gets overlooked. I think that the fact that people have spoken and said they don't want this designation, I can't in good conscience vote yes. And I, I would encourage all my colleagues here also to vote no, because that's what the people have asked us to do. I think doing otherwise is ignoring them.
And I would, I would not want to disagree with your assessment there, but as a council, as this body up here, we're representing the entire city. Um, so whatever happens across town, I would think we would answer it the same way as we answer here. Um, it's for the betterment of the entire city. What's, what's gonna be best for Bellevue? So you have to, you have to understand the tools we're using. You have to see where we wanna be or where we wanna go. Do we wanna be a high-tax bedroom community? Do, Bellevue has a lot of voids in the town. We have a lot of floodplains we don't collect tax on, we have a lot of military ground we don't collect tax on. So you ask why your taxes are high. It's because we don't have the proper development in this town, so I, I'll just leave that with you, so. Um, anybody else have any comments or questions? Councilman Price?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just wanna-
Get my microphone turned on, thank you. Appreciate the humor that was expressed. Appreciate the passion of the citizens in making your voices heard, in petitioning your government, in doing it respectfully, and doing it from your heart, and letting us know your thoughts and feelings. But the humor helped, and knowing how respectful everybody was, I think it demonstrates how the process can work. So I just wanna thank you for being here and being here in such a good way. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right, we are on fifteen A. We have a motion by Cook, seconded by Welch, to approve resolution number two zero two one dash three eight. Please vote.
We have three yes votes and three no votes with Mr. Stinson, Mr. Price, and Mr. Burns voting no.
Mayor votes yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item fifteen B, resolution number two zero two one dash three nine, a resolution to preserve the city's flexibility in financing capital improvements. And I need a motion? Oops, sorry. Councilman Cook?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty-nine.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Please vote. Or you have any questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen, current business, sixteen B, approval of the redevelopment agreement and redevelopment promissory note allowing up to two million six hundred nine thousand seventy-seven dollars plus accrued interest to offset TIF eligible expenses for Hillcrest Freedom Village LLC. Need a motion? Councilman Stinson?
Make a motion, we approve sixteen B.
I'll second that.
Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Sixteen C, recommend approval to purchase new vehicles for the police department fleet not to exceed two hundred and sixty-one thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Councilman Stinson?
Make a motion, we approve sixteen C.
I'll second that.
Motion by Stinson, seconded by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen D, approve the proposal for Midwest Storage Solutions for Evidence Storage Unit in an amount not to exceed twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars. Need a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion that we approve item sixteen D.
Second.
Motion by Welch, seconded by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen E, approve memorandum of understanding with the Nebraska Commission on Law, of, on Law Enforcement and Criminal Justice. Take a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion, approve sixteen E.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Burns. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Sixteen F, approve and authorize the mayor to sign agreement with Lee Construction, Inc., for the East Bank stabilization of Bud Creek under Cornhusker Road Bridge in an amount not to exceed eighty-two thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars, plus a ten percent contingency of eight thousand two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty cents for a total project cost of ninety-one thousand sixty-three dollars and fifty cents. Take a motion? McCaw? Councilman McCaw?
Make a motion, we approve sixteen F.
I'll second that.
Motion by McCaw, seconded by Welch. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Sixteen G, request to purchase one Pierce Impel pumper and additional replacement equipment from McQueen Equipment in an amount not to exceed six hundred and ninety-seven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and authorize mayor to sign. Uh, Councilman Stinson?
Make a motion, we approve sixteen G.
I'll second that.
Motion by Stinson, seconded by Welch. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Takes us to the administration reports, and those are given at the first meeting, which was the- Whoops. Sixteen J, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the letter of intent with Redwood USA LLC to purchase approximately twenty-four point eight-two acres located along South Thirty-Sixth Street at Granada Parkway. Take a motion on that one? Councilman Stinson?
Make a motion, we approve sixteen J.
Second.
Motion by Stinson, seconded by Cook. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Now we'll move to seventeen, administration reports. Those reports were given at the last meeting. We'll expect them the first meeting next month. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Councilman Burns?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Burns, seconded by Welch. Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.